I'm so happy today to have Counselor Eric Zimmerman here. Thanks for coming, Eric.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Yeah. Um, I was gonna say, yeah, we, I met you briefly at this little fundraiser thing we did like before the election. Did I ask you a Taco Bell thing? I can't remember if I did, or what did I ask?
I think I did get that question.
Okay.
Was it our favorite items? Is that what you were asking?
Your favorite Taco Bell thing?
Yeah. Do you want me to answer it again?
Yeah. What was it? What was it?
Well, it's a crispy, sorry. Oh, that was Taco Time. That was Taco Time. No, it's the Crunchwrap Supreme if I'm at Taco Bell.
Okay. I do remember this now.
Yeah.
Cause I was thinking, and I'll get on this, I have a, I have probably too much time on this later, but you're a Doritos guy.
I've become one apparently. Yeah.
So I thought the Doritos taco would be your favorite.
Yeah. There are just some things that shouldn't be combined. I've never tried it. I don't ever want to try it.
Okay.
It's not a thing.
It's a hot take.
No, it's like tortillas were just fine the way they were.
Okay. All good. It's all good. Um, yeah, uh, I was just gonna give you some credit here cause I, I, uh, you know, I watch a lot. I probably watched too many city council meetings. I've been watching them all. Um, and you know, I did my rankings episode. You were my number one. I'm gonna do a six month, uh, kind of another episode coming up here and maybe you can maintain that.
That was a challenge. I'm feeling that weight to keep the, the ranking. Thank you for that though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I just, you know, one of the reasons I gave you that was because, uh, I just feel like you're one of the only kind of people being a good, good steward in every meeting. Like a lot of people I think are looking for little political wins and you're just kind of have, have the main focus on the city and what we need to be doing to get this new council figured out and get things running smoothly. So I just wanted to shout you out for that. Um, and yeah, I wanted to start with giving people a little bit about who you are. I always ask people like your Northwest story. And I wanted to ask also about your military background, cause I think it's unique that, you know, you're one of two veterans on the council, right?
Yeah. Well, you know, I was born in Portland. In fact, uh, as I was coming over here, not, my, my family roots are kind of in this neighborhood actually. And, um, so both my parents are Franklin High School graduates and my grandparents, you know, raised them both in Southeast Portland. And, uh, so I was born here and my mom's a Portland Public Schools teacher. And I think she retired quite a while ago and she's continued to sub in the district forever. It feels like so she's still subbing. I think we're a year 47 for her. Um, but, uh, and actually she taught most of her career in the district that I now represent in terms of District Four. She taught over in Eastmoreland. And so, um, that for me, a lot of roots. And then I went to University of Portland and I took an ROTC scholarship up there. And that for me, you know, was a door opening that I don't think I understood at the time, right? It was 2003 and so obviously there was a lot of stuff that had kicked off, right? In the world and.
I know, I was in high school and they were talking about a draft. I remember.
Yeah. Right. So there was all sorts of stuff, right? I was, I was in high school in nine 11. Uh, when I was a senior, we invaded Iraq. A few months later I joined ROTC. As the oldest kid in the family, um, it was attractive to me. A full ride was attractive to me. And I was, I was already kind of geared toward some military stuff. I kind of realized I was good at what they had been advertising or asking for. They, they used to, I don't know if they still do it, but they advertised for scholar, leader, athlete, right? And I was like, okay, I'm a pretty decent student. Uh, I'm the captain of the track team. Uh, okay. I, I, maybe I could do this, right? And so I'm really grateful for that scholarship, grateful for the University of Portland, because they basically waived everything for, that wasn't covered by the scholarship. So it truly was like a full ride in a sense. And I certainly was a person who thought, I'm gonna do my four years, get back to being normal. But I also, at the same time, you know, in college, you, you kind of figure yourself out. And I, you know, I came out of the closet during that time and this was also pre repeal. So Don't Ask, Don't Tell was still alive and well.
That was like 2004, right? I think.
No, that was 1112 is when it changed. So, so I graduate, I was in and I graduated and I served overseas all during still a Don't Ask, Don't Tell time. And so part of the reason that I, um, became a member of the National Guard here in Oregon is just, I, I felt like I might be able to keep that secret a little bit longer in the guard than I would have been on active duty. And so it was kind of a means of survival. It's become a great opportunity because I love being a member of the National Guard, right? Um, uh, 18 years of service and still in and a lieutenant colonel now and a battalion commander and.
Wow.
Um, a lot of my peers who were only in active duty, they got out a long time ago, right? After our commitments were over. And so I think that era of young officers, you did one thing that every, we all did the same thing. You went overseas, right? Every, every lieutenant knew you were gonna go to Iraq or you're gonna go to Afghanistan. That's what's gonna happen. And then you're gonna do it again and again and again. And people get burnt out.
Getting deployed.
Yeah. And so, um, the guard has offered me a way. We don't, we deploy, but not, we didn't deploy as frequently. We go live our normal lives with our families. We have our normal jobs and then we also do military on the weekend. I think that's one of the reasons I've been able to stay in it a long time. I have deployed for the military, uh, stateside to, and I use deployed very loosely in that sense, but I've, uh, done emergency, you know, emergency state activation for fire season, right? I led a task force on one of our big forest fires we had in 2015. I deployed to the Iraq war in 2009 and 2010. Deployed on a peacekeeping mission for the, for the NATO in Kosovo and in 2020. So was there during the pandemic. And then I took a diplomatic post at one of our US embassies, uh, the one in Bangladesh, uh, 21 and 22, before I came back to Portland. And those are things I don't think people think of when they think of the National Guard, right?
Yeah.
Being going to these places, working as a, you know, a, um, a deputy chief in a, in an embassy or an assistant attache. That's not something people think of necessarily. So great opportunities have shaped me in a lot of ways, but I, when I'm not doing the army side, I previously I, you know, I got my start at Multnomah County in the tax, property tax appraisal world.
Okay.
And, um, this was in the heart of the big, just before the recession.
Right.
So watching real estate tank and being a young appraiser, learning everything there is to learn about, about real estate appraisal and going through that. And, um, while I was there at the county and I had that job, you know, between my deployment of Iraq and coming home, I still, they kept, you know, they kept my job for me, which is great. One of the important perk for anybody. And I got involved in a veterans group and I got involved because the county commissioners there wanted a veterans group to kind of help because they were a social service. We had a lot of veterans coming home at the time. And I, I sometimes joke, uh, but I think it's probably true. My first job in politics I got because I, I yelled at a lady at one of those meetings. And this was the days when if you had a veterans group, it was gonna be a group of people who had big hearts, but they kind of assumed we were all broken, right? We were all either had drug and alcohol problems. We all had mental health problems or we just couldn't sustain a job. And I, I really pushed back on that narrative. I didn't think it was helpful for people like me who were 25 years old, ready to go, had a lot of, you know, vinegar in our veins and we weren't broken. Maybe we were a little high strung, but we weren't broken. And I really pushed back on this lady and county commissioner who oversaw this task force, she took note of that. And a couple of years later, she needed a new chief of staff and said, why don't you leave the county department and come work for me on the county commission? As my next chief of staff. And that was Diane McKeel. She represented East Portland, Gresham, Fairview, Troutdale, out to the, out to the county line. And that was my first paid political job. Um, and it was great. And from there, I, you know, after I left the county, I became a deputy city manager in a couple of towns in Oregon. Um, so you're able to have that balance in the guard, right? And I, I just think it's a, the reason I spent a lot of time on it in my story is because it's a big part of my story. And that balance is, is unique and it's something I wish we talked more about because I think it's a great opportunity for, for anybody's got a high school kid or, or anybody who is getting ready to leave college or anybody who's in their, in their, you know, twenties. He's like, I want to do a little bit, something extra. I think it's always been a great thing. I'm glad I found it early.
That is really cool. Yeah. I didn't know your background with it was that kind of that deep. And also I didn't know about the appraising background. That makes sense why you're, you know, you're so informed about housing and trying to help in that regard with Portland. I was gonna shout you out really quickly. Thanks for bringing this V8. I love V8.
I heard you liked V8. So there you go. I, I, y'all should come with a gift.
Whenever I tell people that too, they're like, you got, there's still so much salt in there. And I like this kind and the low sodium kind. I don't really care. I like salt. So.
Salt makes tomatoes taste good. So there you go.
But thank you for that. Um, let's see here. I'm gonna start with, um, yeah, I wanted to just get your take on how's this first four months been in this brand new city council? I know there's so much, you know, I did so many shows last year about what it's gonna look like, how it's gonna play out. I just want your take on like how it's functioning and then also just how it's been with the other counselors from your perspective.
Yeah. Um, it's been a lot.
Yeah.
I'll just put it there. It's, it's a lot. I think it is become a much bigger job than any of the transition folks expected that it would be. You know, I think some of the initial plans in my estimation really kind of segmented off the city council as kind of this other thing, right? They were very focused on the new government just works for the mayor. Council's just over here, kind of a pat on the back. I don't think that's what Portlanders were expecting. And so, and I certainly don't think that they set up the council to be able to do the job that Portlanders were expecting, right? Portlanders had a lot of, of positive anxiety about what is a district gonna mean for me, right? For the first time, we could actually have districts. And I think that the number of Portlanders who would come and talk to me excited about a district, um, option and a district representative is the majority frankly. And we weren't really set up to be able to do that job. I think they, they really viewed it as if they, they compared it, um, more to some of the small towns in Oregon where a city counselor comes in at seven o'clock at night. They have a two hour meeting once a week. But they hold their regular jobs all day long out in the community. You just, you can't do that for your largest city in your state. That's just, that's not ever gonna work. Uh, I believe fundamentally that those big cities should be full time and I'm glad that this one is. But you have to put the support structures around it. So right away, we really had to kind of carve out some space. And most everything that is happening at the city, you've got to understand is, is there's a little bit of law, right? Your charter, city code, but the most of government in the early years functions on precedent setting. And we're really in that phase right now, which means it's hard to know like what is right? What is best practice? What is helpful? What's not? So we're going through that phase. I think we're going through it in a fairly positive way, but it, it causes wrinkles to happen in public. They don't, those don't bother me too much. Um, but you know, one quarter in, that's kind of where we're at, right? We're in that phase. So the emphasis that a counselor puts on a committee, what's the role of a committee? Is that where you do the deep work? Is that where you have most of your public testimony happen? Or is that a pass through, then then all the deep work and all the testimony happens again at your, at the big council? That's a debate we're having. What will be important is does that debate win? Only when your item is the thing that is sailing through or getting clogged or does your opinion stay the course based on, not based on what side of an argument you're on? You know, and so it's also a West Coast model, right? Like if you were to go to Milwaukee, Wisconsin and, uh, and I did that with a group of Portlanders, a couple of our old city commissioners, and we watched their city council, which operates more as like a mini legislature. So the public is really involved in the committee structure, kind of like our legislative system. But then in your council, you're not sitting around one big horseshoe dais. You're sitting at individual desks and you rise and be recognized. You speak on a thing, you vote on a thing, you pass bills, et cetera. So they just have a diff, that's more of a Midwest and East Coast kind of function. Ours is more of a West Coast where we're all at the dais and everybody expects you're always gonna have it. So we're just going through some of those, like what is the best way to make the sausage? And given Oregon law, you have to make the sausage in public, right? Backroom deals and backroom conversations are very restricted here and that's a good thing, but it does mean that we have to show some vulnerability on the, on the dais.
Cause that's your one opportunity.
That's our one opportunity where 12 of us can get together and talk openly. And so, so that's important. How it's going is I, I think that there are a majority of people, if not the entire group, who are there for honorable, good reasons. We disagree on some of the things that are most important, but, um, I used to say this a lot during the campaign is, I was supporting a lot of candidates in the campaign because I thought I didn't meet anybody who was running to burn the city down. And that mattered to me. We might have differences on what the most important thing is, but it's important that you have a good heart. And I've got 11 other colleagues who have good hearts on these issues and will argue like dogs all the time. But, but, but people who I can like and get along with, and that's really, really important. Even on the days when maybe I need to walk away, right? And that's just part of legislating. It's part of being in a new system. It's part of having to establish norms. And you're hoping the norm you agree with gets kind of like adopted by the body. Because everything we're doing is we're doing it for the first time. Uh, and I know that hasn't given a lot of people a lot of faith, right? I think the public expects like, we got, we elected this new city council. You've got to come in and just know what you're doing. But the thing, I think people generally know what they're doing. But it didn't exist just six months ago, right? The city council of last year does not exist anymore. And the codes that, that presided over there, them, those don't exist anymore. So, um, I think, I think that has been, for some people, they understand that. For some people, it's been a point of frustration. For me, it's been a point of frustration and I understand it. Yeah.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense. That's kind of how, what I would surmise, you know, a lot of the, it seems like, yeah, a lot of the focus is on the committee level stuff and, um, and yeah, I agree. Like it, you know, I get frustrated with the pace of things sometimes, but it is also, like you said, it's, it wasn't overnight, but it was like from December to January, we just went to this new system and everyone's gotta figure out how it works. And, and I will, I will say too, I, I'm surprised that kind of the, um, like in all the meetings, I don't see a lot of insanely fiery stuff between all the counselors, which is impressive to me, like at this point to be.
Yeah.
Pretty civil is, you know, that's a good thing. So.
I mean, the system is set up and you got two things, right? You've got the Oregon way, which is we often will not say the thing that needs to get said. We are like Portland polite to a point that is not helpful. And then you've got politics, which people assume is always about fighting or it's always in that. And so I think that the public expects us to be able to use the system to raise a concern without being ugly about it, right? And just if you can show up and be respectful on behalf of your district, when you disagree with somebody across the table. People expect that a heck of a lot more than they do the fiery kind of, kind of, um, personal attack stuff that, uh, is sometimes easier to do, will get you more attention, probably isn't helping the institution overall. And probably isn't what your district would want of you, even if you fire up a few of those, of the, of your constituents when you do it. It's probably not overall what they're looking for.
Right.
At least that's the approach I'm trying to take. Like I'm a sharp tongued person. Everybody knows that about me. But being disrespectful is something that I hope that doesn't hugely come onto the dais, right? That, that's important.
Yeah. Like I said, I don't really see too much of that. And I think that's a good thing. And I totally see what you're saying too about setting a precedent. That seems super important. And I, I feel like you're definitely doing that of just like, here's the tone we want. We're also trying to be, you know, make progress with the system. And so, but yeah, I appreciate your perspective on the first four months. And so, yeah, I wanted to get into this, obviously the topic of like the past two months has been this budget crunch. And by this point, I think the budget should be out. So we will kind of know some more details about it. But I'm just curious what your, what you'd like to see priority wise in the budget, regardless of what the mayor's proposing.
Yeah. You know, I, I come from the school of thought of you should always let the executive know what your budget priorities are. Don't keep them a secret. In our system, in the way that Oregon cities and, and counties work is that the, the chief executive, the budget officer will release their proposed budget. My best tip for anybody who ever finds themselves on a budget committee in elected, rather, no matter how big or small your town is, is get the things you care about in the proposed budget, because it's a lot harder to put something in.
Kind of retroactive.
Yeah. And, and so, because, because we have to, we have to propose a balanced budget. So when the mayor proposed his balanced budget, his budget, it was balanced, which means if I have something I want to add to it, I also have to figure out what I want to take away from it. And that can be hard when it's, when you're doing it, um, without a holistic look, right? So for me, the things that I, I outlined for the mayor and, and he's got, he's got my, my priorities, but public safety, right? I think we took a huge, um, leap this last few years from the mindset that was, you know, defunding and going backwards on public safety. I worked really hard when I returned to city hall in 22 to start the cleanup of downtown, to start getting a city, um, set of services that people could call on. Because frankly, the city, the bureaus, most places had their head in the sand. They were unresponsive. They were working from home. It wasn't happening in a way that was meeting the public's needs and everything was broken. One of those areas I think we have slowly repaired has been public safety, right? Our call time responses, well, I'll start from the minute you initiate a call. Your 911 pickup is faster than it was a couple of years ago.
I know there's a lot of work at BoAC.
Huge. Huge. They have done such a good job. I am so thankful to Director Kazi, that team, the help frankly, from the, from the media and the Portland public who, when they heard we have a hiring need right now, people stepped up, right? Sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And when we said, we have vacancies and we could use your help, people stepped up. So the 911 pickup is faster. The call response time for, for fire, for ambulances, which is the county, but ambulances for police have all improved, right? So those are good steps in the right direction. I've done ride alongs. I've done ride alongs and seen the kind of calls that we are just not getting to. And that should always be concerning to a, an elected official, right? Somebody has called 911 or made a police report and we're not getting to them. That's a problem. So we've always got to be going forward in that, but, um, I'll do everything I can to protect every dollar in public safety. No backtracking whatsoever. We can, we can debate on whether things are one time only funding or general ongoing funding. At the end of the day, this upcoming year's police, fire, public safety budgets should not be reduced in my opinion at all. The other thing, and I, I'll be honest, man, I did not know in my first year of elected service that, um, I'd have to fight so hard for youth, sports and recreation and access to parks. But in the preliminary budget that came out in February, it was a significant portion of the proposed cuts because it's such a, a large general fund department. If you've got a general fund deficit, where do you cut? And if you're protecting public safety, where do you cut? Parks took a lot of that in the preliminary. Now, um, I'm happy that the, you know, I, I coached sports. I was, I was in sports. I think that what.
You were a tracks, track star or?
I wouldn't say star, but I was a, I was a good teammate. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Um, but you know, what a kid does from two o'clock in the afternoon till eight o'clock in the evening is just as related to public safety or is, is, is related to public safety as some of those other things. And it's related to how we interact with our city and what we expect from our, from our city core services and what we want our kids to do and how they make community. And frankly, in this era of the post COVID era, kind of the antisocial stuff, I would, I'm a fan of any pro social activity right now. And so for me, protecting kids' access to sports, community centers in the parks has been huge. And I'm, and I'm glad that the mayor has leaned back toward that and is not necessarily gonna accept all those cuts. But that was another area that I'll tell you, six months ago, that was not on my radar of like, that's gonna be a, a thing that we have to go fight for. And, and we are now fighting. And so, um, that's been important. The other area that I find really important, it's been a new program over the last few years, but it's called PIMO, which is Portland Environmental Management Office. They hold a series of problem solver neighborhood meetings every week, all over this. Every neighborhood in the city of Portland now has one. It started in the downtown areas and it has grown. And it is the most responsive city office when it comes to the stagnant thing, right? Your, your trash can on the corner in downtown got beat up by somebody and, and it's just, it's not being addressed by the regular course of business. You raise it with the PIMO problem solver meeting and you're likely to see that thing replaced within a few days. The graffiti areas that are continually, um, you know, just you clean them up, they get graffiti again, clean them up. Putting some solutions around that. They aren't the homeless camp sweep team, but they are the, how do we prevent it from coming back into this area team? If, you know, in my district and actually in a lot of other areas, a lot of the small business districts, we've really expanded the street tree lighting program.
Okay.
It's made the city look beautiful. That's PIMO. That's PIMO.
Yeah. So is it fair to say that's kind of like trying to reduce blight on the city or make the city more like visible in a, in a appealing way?
Livability. I, I mean, you could call them the Department of the Public Realm, right? If you're on the street and you can see it from there, PIMO can touch it.
Okay.
And they have a lot of authority and that's really good.
Yeah.
Because they don't have to play the old turf war of, well, is that a parks asset? Is that a, is that a P bot asset? Oh, that's a water bureau thing.
There's no siloing in that.
They, they're like, nope. And we started them that way under the previous mayor. And he gave them the emergency, uh, authority and declaration to just go forward and do whatever it took. And so the current mayor still is using them. So we're preserving their funding is part of this, right? So public safety, youth sports is related to that, livability and, and the public realm is related to that. Cleaning things up, making sure that RVs that are burnt out on the streets get towed and destroyed and those kinds of things all go back. This is all related, right? So that's kind of the focus. If somebody's asked me like, what are you focusing on? It's, is it around public safety, livability, that kind of stuff? Those are my, those are my focus moving into the season now. We've got the mayor's budget. So we're all doing the line by line to see what, what has changed. But I, I'm feeling pretty good.
Okay. Yeah. I like that. Um, and what's, I was just a question that popped into my head just now, like what is the, cause I don't, I have no idea. So the, the budget comes out, uh, you know, by this point, the mayor will, you know, do his presentation, whatever you want to call it. What are the next steps after that you guys?
Yeah. Yeah. Great question and kind of complicated. So, um, the mayor proposes budget. And from there, uh, you know, the public, that's a hearing, right? But, but now we're in the phase of the council as a whole, as the budget committee, and then the committees individually, holding budget work sessions.
Got it.
So the way we've set this up is that the individual bureaus are going to present to the committees. And that's an area where they'll get more into the details, the programs, the, hey, I, I decreased this program by this many FTE, full-time employees. That equals this many dollars and here's my reason why.
And they, haven't they kind of been doing that already a little bit, but that's.
Slightly. They've been indicating the direction. There's something that's kind of important about this. Yeah. Something that's really important about this is that in Oregon budget law, we're really not supposed to have the true debate about line items until the mayor has proposed the budget.
Okay.
So we've been talking around.
Right.
The problem with value statements and all that stuff. That's really frustrating at times.
High level.
To give him the best indication for, if you propose this, you're likely to have a favorable, um, response from me. That's why I give him my memo of it. Here's what I want to see. I want to see these kinds of things. You do that and I don't have to fiddle around with your budget with amendments. Now, once, now that we have a proposed budget, we can talk real dollars, real numbers, real FTE. And that, that's.
Really get granular.
That is the balance sheet where you are, the zero matters, right?
Yeah.
So we're gonna do that. The bureaus are gonna happen at the committee levels, right? We have different committees. Then we'll come back as the whole council throughout this process. So it's not like, it's not a one, two step. It is iterative. Everybody's kind of at different phases coming in. But these new DCAs, the deputy city administrators, they have their service areas. What we've asked is that when they have the whole budget committee, now that their bureaus have presented on the individual level, come back and talk in like a larger picture. If you are the Community and Economic Development Service area. All right, Mr. DCA, tell us now, given all the details we got from your bureau presentations, what do you want the whole council to take away? What is different moving into the next year? How did you meet the constraint cuts needed? What programs are you, um, interested in offloading? Or what programs are you looking to expand? Because the real important thing here, and Portlanders should know this, is that in a year when you have a budget cut, we will still have new stuff kickoff this next year, right? We sometimes have to adjust what is now considered a core service, right? Because, you know, six years ago, we didn't know that PIMO would be a core service, but I would consider it a core service today.
Yeah.
So what gives then? Something else we have to get out of the line of business for if we're not raising money to do both. And I think that's a perfectly healthy exercise to do, which Portland has never done in our old former government. And I bet we're the only city in Oregon, actually, has never had a core services conversation as a city council and as a public. Because in the old former government, it, it behooved you as a commissioner in charge of X, Y, and Z bureau to not really fiddle with someone else's bureau.
Right.
Cause it's kind of self-serving.
Territorial.
Yeah. That no longer exists. Now we gotta talk as one council, one city of Portland, one voice. And so that, that makes sense. But if PIMO is a core service now, what are we giving up? And that's what we're gonna have the DCAs explain in the larger, council may not agree with them. Council may amend their budget, but we want to give them a chance to share the narrative for the why behind their decision package. That's helpful. That's helpful.
And is there, um, like a definitive timeline or is it just kind of like as long as it takes to get through that process and then the budget's approved finally?
So our current operating funds for all governments in Oregon, they, they end on the thirtieth of June.
Gotcha. Okay.
So our goal is to pass, adopt a budget by the eighteenth of June. And we will, we'll do two important steps in this. We're going to approve the budget on May twenty first. Like we will not leave the dais until we improve a balanced budget. And what that really is signaling is the proposed budget that has been put forward is both balanced and is setting the size of the fund that we anticipate to spend in the upcoming fiscal year. And then we'll go through a couple more weeks before June eighteenth where we are, I'll, I'll kind of put it like we're, we're shaving off a little bit here. We're adding a little bit over here. It's the detail stuff and that really gets us to the adopted budget. Right? So approved, May twenty one, adopted, June eighteenth. And when we adopt, that's kind of the final thing. Um, so there is a timeline, right? So there may be some late nights coming forward because quite literally, we cannot get up from the dais unless we have a plan for how are we going to do this?
Yeah. Yeah. And it makes sense when there's fiscal years and all that stuff. And I know you guys have had some.
And it's a lot, but every, we all do it. We even did it in, in the pandemic. I know Multnomah County, I think they went up till June twenty something, right? Like you can do it. And, and there's trade offs, right? You're going to make amendments. People are going to add some stuff. I've got some amendments I plan to bring. And then we're, we're in a debate. That's what happens.
Yeah. Yeah. Healthy kind of debate about it. Um, this is kind of maybe a left field, but I just figured with your county knowledge, I was just curious, how does that? Cause I know they're going through a budget process as well. How does, is that a similar timeline of?
Yeah. So they, they, uh, the chair released her budget last week or the week before. They're going through the same thing. I think they'll adopt a little bit before the city. But it's all, all the local governments in Oregon, we all start a new year on July first.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yep. So we all kind of have that same June constraint. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I figured you'd know. It's one of the things that I appreciated about you being a counselor is that cause I, you know, I have a lot of guests on here who are involved with the county and we talk about the county a lot. And I just think, you know, I, I have a hard enough time educating people on what the county does here. So I just think it's super important that you have that background and know how they interact with the city and it just seems super important. So.
And part of why I've got a lot of the, this with the budget right now is that the council president assigned me as the chair of the finance committee. So I am feeling that weight of shepherding this process through for its first time. That you have to use your best experience in all these other places that I've worked. I've done this now at three different governments. But it, there is not a process that existed for the city of Portland that reflects this government. And so we have worked every single day, the council president and I are talking about, how do we, how do we put together a process that makes sense? Cause as a finance chair, I'm trying to help her as much because she's the presiding officer over this, this budget discussion. Um, and so where I can be helpful, I'm trying to be as the finance chair. And then as a finance chair, also keeping that oversight of good practices, bad practices, making sure that we are detail oriented and not just kind of fluffing government speak across big decisions, right? Keeping numbers at the front of this and keeping services at the front of this. So it, it weighs on me and I look very forward to July.
Yeah, it's a lot going on. Um, uh, yeah, kind of in that same realm, I wanted to kind of go back to public safety a little bit and ask about, um, because there's been conversation. I, I don't even know what you call it. There's a measure to make, uh, Portland Street Response, P S R, its own bureau. Is that accurate?
I think the language that the sponsors call it is co-equal branch in the public safety.
Okay.
I think they're doing a riff off of like our, our US government, you know, co-equal branches of government, that idea. Yeah.
I'm just curious, yeah, your take on that. And, because I don't know, I always tell people I'm, I support P S R. I'm just, you know, like a lot of people I hear from, they're trying to figure out their role in public safety and uh, I will say I am of the opinion that now is not the time to create a bureau, but that's just my opinion. I'd assume it's very expensive, but I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what the intent behind the co-equal language really means. Um, and I, and I've said as much to the folks who are sponsoring it. I think I would, I, I don't know that the problem exists that this solution is trying to solve. So P S R right now, huge thing I think is first off, they'll, they're going to start, uh, shuttling people, right? Apparently we're not supposed to say the word transport because the, the emergency services has the rights to that term apparently. But the bottom line is no one calls nine one one for a person in crisis on the street to watch them get, stay there.
Yeah.
Right? That's, no one calls that.
An assumption that they'll be taken.
It's an assumption that they will be taken somewhere. The best of hearts are calling and hoping that some sort of intervention is happening for a person who's dangerously in crisis. And so that change to shuttling for me is a game changer in the future of P S R, meaning it had to happen. And so I'm very thankful and I'm glad that we've gotten to the point where they can start doing that. In fact, there's footage, we've all, a lot of us have seen it, you know, during the snowstorms. In an emergency, P S R has already been taking people to shelters, right? Getting, they get them to the P S R van and they're driven there. So.
That was for warming shelters?
Yeah. Yeah. So capability wise, it exists there. Role and responsibility. We're now just getting there. So that's huge. That's really important. The other thing is that the leadership of P S R is assigning their team, their teams, uh, to when the greatest amount of calls come in that relate to P S R types of, of services. And so there is this debate around, should we have twenty four seven P S R? And what I would say is we already do. Meaning if the program director says, actually, you know, when I need the most P S R calls to be responded to is two AM to six AM, that director could do that. They can work with the team to have that shift covered, but it turns out that's actually not when the calls come in. So like anything, like any public safety, you staff based on the call volume that you have at the, at a given time. And we don't want to make sure that, that you don't understaff so that you can't get to calls. That's what's going on with police right now. We don't want to do that with them. But you don't want to overstaff where people are just sitting there because politically it was fun to say we got to twenty four hours when we don't have enough calls to have that many teams on. So I want a balance to happen. I don't know what a co-equal branch means. I know that Boak, that's nine one one service. I know that, um, your, your ambulances, fire and police all work as part of an integrated system.
Right, right.
We cannot set up a different nine one one system for P S R. So I am not looking for an independent agency out there to be a free agent on the, on the field, so to speak. I'm looking for somebody who's going to integrate like the rest of public safety. I'm not looking to start a new bureau. They need to work within the rest of that apparatus. And I think that there is an expiring perspective from the previous years that P S R was or was not a valued service that might be driving some of this. But I think at this point, P S R is a valued service. And I think the city council is about to set its values very sternly in how we provide budget to this service. So I'm not sure what the concern is. Getting back to what is the problem we're really trying to solve here? Fun fact, if you want to call P S R, their number is nine one one.
Right. That's what, yeah, the past year, everyone that I've heard in the whole zeitgeist now is just, just if you have a problem, just call nine one one and they'll.
That is who you should call. Yeah. If, if you are threatened or somebody, or you see somebody threatened by themselves, exposure to the elements, et cetera, or by a person, call nine one one. Those are the folks who are most trained and most capable of looking at what is available right now to deal with this call. And so there is no special number for the police and no special number for fire, no special number for P S R, no special number for EMS. Call nine one one. Let the Boak employees triage the right service to right place. So I think, I think we have to be, and, and here's the, I think the P S R employees have come a long way in, in terms of advocating for themselves and understanding, helping tell the story about what services are being provided. And sometimes, uh, I think that their story is being kind of co-opted by some advocates that, that maybe are hung on to the argument about whether P S R should exist from five years ago. And so I, I, I'm not, I'm not too worried. Um, well, I'm not worried in any sense that P S R is going to get cut in this budget. Let me be really clear about that. And I'm not, I'm not too worried about kind of a one-off effort to make something an independent agency outside of the other public safety bureaus, because they all work together. And I think most people who support P S R will know they're going to be most successful if they work with police and fire, EMS, et cetera.
Yeah, that's like totally, you know, it's one of the reasons I always say I support them is because I think that they have a role in that ecosystem. And what I would hate to see is what happened with like Wall Street Journal just did this big story on Kahoots and Eugene. And they like, after what thirty something years disbanded it because it, it became its own thing and they basically became an anti-police kind of rogue thing. And that's what I would hate to see with P S R because right now I think they're doing, you know, they've improved a lot. And like you said, the trans or the, uh, shuttling ability, um,
Yeah.
is huge. And, and yeah, I think that if they all work together, it would be the best for the city.
That's exactly right. And it's, it's really too bad that Kahoots and Eugene has gone through what they're going through. But remember in this community, up until twenty nineteen, we had something called Cheers.
Right. The vans. Yeah.
Yeah. Used to call it the drunk tank, right? Like maybe some of us had some friends who spent a night there or whatever it was.
White van with the blue, I think it was blue.
Yeah. It was basically a diversionary program from you're doing something that we could ham you up for, then get you in trouble for. And instead of doing that, we're going to let you cool it off at a place that makes it safer for you. As, as the meth and fentanyl that is on the streets today hit the market and twenty nineteen, what used to be some drugs and a lot of alcohol really became a level of drugs that that system really could not handle, right? So when I worked for Julia Brem Edwards at Multnomah County, one of the first things we started working on was reigniting this idea of a sobering center. It used to be funded by the city of Portland because the primary user of it was Portland police and cheers. Instead of going to jail, instead of going, instead of being left on the street and instead of going to a hospital, we had this option, very important. That left. And then even worse drugs came about. And then the need for a place and the number of, of overdoses in our community skyrocketed to levels that we've never seen before. And we didn't have a place for sobering, right? There's a whole bunch about this, this debate that comes to the number of treatment beds, inpatient, outpatient, which are part of the treatment continuum. I want to be really clear, a sobering center is part of the public safety continuum. It's not part of the treatment continuum. It's not reimbursed by, you know, Medicaid or, or by Care Oregon. It is a public safety thing. And what we're, what we're saying when we say that is if you're so intoxicated that you can't take care of yourself. And if you see the number of overdoses that we had in Oregon last year and in Portland last year, I think, the county thinks that if you take people to a sobering center, that the overdose rate will go down. Narcan is more available. Eyes are on you watching kind of how you, you know, decompensate or don't, et cetera, et cetera. Like those types of things, people have to have eyes on. Sleeping on the street, living on the street, doing drugs on the street is the most dangerous thing you can do in Portland today. So, but here's where P S R comes in. That's really important. When Multnomah County stands up their sobering center, right now they have some sobering beds. They have thirteen that's over at the deflection center. But when they stand up the true sobering center, which we estimated needs to have at least thirty five to fifty beds to have an impact on livability downtown and on the people who are going through it, then they're going to stand up a, a shuttling service like Cheers again. The other main shuttle agency that might make a lot of sense here is P S R. We want P S R to be able to evaluate a person and be like, they might not actually be in mental health crisis. They might be in a drug crisis and they make sense to come over here. And right now, they would be left where they are. And that's dangerous. And that's also when, when you say a city services intervened and then left somebody and then they had a bad outcome, which let's be honest, we're talking about drug overdoses. That means dying.
Right.
That's terrible, right? And so going to, going to a sobering center is something that I really hope P S R can support moving forward. Once the county opens that, I think that two groups are going to take people that are the most, P S R and whatever the county calls their new version of Cheers.
Okay. Is that the one? I know they have a current, the county has a current, uh,
The county opened a deflection center to ref, to kind of deal with the measure one ten ref, um, reform issue. But that is a little bit more treatment. You kind of check in. It hasn't really, and, and if you're, if you're high or drunk, you are ineligible.
Okay.
Right? So it's not for a person in the moment. It is for a person who gets picked up with drugs on their, on their person and the police officer can say, well, this is illegal and we have this deflection program. Now, this same site, and this is why it gets a little confusing, this same site is very, um, good reputation of providers that we brought in from Baltimore, uh, that run a similar service out in Bolton, Baltimore. They have now just this last week opened up thirteen sobering beds. And so now, now there is this healthcare side of it and this public safety side of it. But the first part was not for people who were intoxicated.
Right, right. I remember that.
Sobering is only for people who are intoxicated.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I remember hearing that because that's kind of the, with repealing one ten or changing one ten, that was kind of the new option is you can go, we can charge you for your crime or you can go to this center, right? Yeah. What I was talking about was more, don't, doesn't the county have a transport? They have like a thing like, um, like P S R? I was trying to remember the name of it, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm drawing a blank now.
But I was just curious if they, they would also be helping in that.
What I don't know about that is if they have transport capabilities. They might. If they do, what I would say is anybody who encounters a person who is too intoxicated to care for themselves, I hope you would take that person to the sobering center, right? That could be a friend.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a, a, an agency. It could be a friend.
Yeah.
And that's important because we don't need to have folks, we don't want people going to jail, right? And the hospitals, frankly, we're not having great outcomes there either, right? So can we send them to sobering? Give that amount of time. They're not going to be there very long, frankly. But also what we've learned in other places that have sobering centers is you're not going to help fix that person's life on the first interaction.
Takes a long time.
It does. But the tenth time that you've come in, we do see place after place say, yes, it takes a few times. And then we've established a relationship with this person. And they are more likely to take us up on the offer of, we also have a detox bed that you can go to if you want. And that is the beginning of the treatment program, right? Sobering is not treatment. Sobering is avoiding dangerous outcomes. Treatment is getting off the drugs. And if, if sobering enables us to provide better outcomes for people to get to eventually get to treatment, I'm all for it. Now, we just talked a really long time about a whole lot of county related stuff. The reason I bring it up is that because sobering is a public safety measure and not a healthcare measure, I think the city should still be involved in it. And since our folks are going to be the primary dropper offers, we should probably have some skin in this. And it used to be entirely funded by the city of Portland.
Okay.
So we don't do that anymore. It is, it, it should be the county. And I'm okay if we carve out some money for them, uh, to keep it alive. We've got to have a sobering center in a city this big with this big of a drug and alcohol program.
Absolutely.
And the fact that we don't is why we have such terrible overdose numbers.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it definitely seems like, you know, that could save a lot of lives as well. Um, yeah, and it totally makes sense. You know, that's another reason like, and why I think you're a great council member is because just even having the awareness of, you know, because it all helps Portland, right? Even if it's in a county, in the realm of the county or in their duties and responsibilities, it's just, it's good to know how all the pieces work together.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
We want it to be integrated, right? County and city have fought for too long. We want it to be integrated.
Totally. Um, I wanted to ask really quick about just a couple more things here. What, what's your best advice for people to, if they want to do public testimony or just get any of their voice heard to, to the council? What's the best way to do that?
Great question. So I think, I think the public underestimates how powerful public testimony is. I really do. I think that people assume things are baked or they assume that it's kind of for the people who seem to always show up, right? For me, some of the most impactful testimony that I get are from people who I've never seen come in before, but they were motivated on this topic to come in. I say that as a person who, one of the very first things of activism that I ever took was driving back to my school district. Because I read in the paper that, that there was a movement to ban one of the books, one of the only books that I read in high school. Cause I mostly faked it all the way through. And I couldn't believe that they were going to ban a book. I was the only person who'd signed up to testify that night against the ban. The whole room of a school board is there to, and I kind of grew up in a little bit of a The whole room of a school board is there to, and I kind of grew up in a little bit of a churchy kind of area that I wasn't surprised. And they were there to ban this book. They delayed the vote that day. And the next meeting that they held on this topic was moved out of the boardroom and into a school gymnasium. And it was the inverse. Hundreds and hundreds of kids and parents showed up to support this book. And that, that vocal minority who was there to ban it was outnumbered 10 to one. But remember the week or two before I was one against 30.
Right.
Right? So I cannot.
Impact.
I have done that myself. That is my origin story in terms of like getting loud about something you knew was wrong. And that was, you know, that was 20 some odd years ago at this point. And that, that moves counselors. People should sign up. If you care a lot, you should sign up. Now, I get a lot of emails from advocacy groups who obviously send a link out to their members that say, put your counselor's name in and put your last name in, and then we're just going to fill in the rest. And so I get the same letter 150 times. Just it's signed by Bob, it's signed by Chris, it's signed by Betty, but it's the same message over and over. I would say that shows me that there's something that has spiked the interest of an advocacy group, but those aren't personal stories and personal impact stories. And so we all take to those differently. For me, I'm looking and I am moved by, tell me how this thing that I'm supposed to weigh in on impacts you in ways you think maybe I don't understand yet. Right? And so I, I'm a big fan of it. And I've said it over the course of the last couple of weeks to a lot of groups. Don't underestimate the power of public testimony. And so signing up for items at committee, signing up for items at council to speak on them. And you'll get, usually you get three minutes if there's a lot, usually about two minutes. And then a personal note, an email is welcome. Right? An email, if you think I really did something bad and you disagreed with and why, I, I read it and I'll listen. An email of you're an asshole, you've always been one, you're, you know, a traitor to Portland. And just kind of the hair on fire thing. And like, well, I'm not, I'm not sure how to take that because those happen, right? Those happen all the time. So I would say disagreement is healthy and, and your counselors are listening to disagreement. They're listening to testimony. The way you, the way you show up matters though. Right?
Right.
You can be mad and credible. And I think you can be, um, positive and maybe not so credible because we kind of know like you're just a paid thing to do whatever. So it's a balance, but I'd say normal people showing up on issues and how it affects their lives. Generally, we don't give enough credit as a, as a public. We don't give enough credit to how much you can move your counselors.
Okay.
We really don't.
Yeah. No, that makes a lot of sense. I like how you weighted it too, because that's one thing I'm always kind of like struggling to tell people is, because all, you know, all I hear is in-person testimony is the best. But I mean, especially with your story, that makes so much sense as to why, why that is. But, um, but yeah, I like, I wish that was, I wish there was kind of like a system to it that had that weight, weight that you just explained. Cause that made a lot of sense, the way you explained it. But, um,
Yeah. If you have the time and I, and I recognize, right? Coming to council is, is an effort.
Yeah.
Right? And so that's not possible for everybody and based on your work schedule and, and where you live in town, et cetera. So weigh it and what you can do is, is helpful. Um, and, but if you can, if you can be in person, for me, that's most impactful. And then the next is a personal note. Counselor Zimmerman or Eric, I hope you'll vote on this and here's why I think it's the right thing. Or something I don't think you've thought about, and I hope you will, because this really matters to me. I read those.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's great that you do. Yeah. Um, my last thing here, before I get into these goofy questions, uh, I just want to talk housing for a minute, obviously. I supported, you know, this Keith Wilson and the governors. I'm, at this point it's a, it's a suggestion, right? To drop SDC fees, which I think is great. I was also saying, if we're up to me, I would also put a moratorium on any new burdensome housing measures from the city. But I'm just curious your take on that.
Yeah.
Especially now, now knowing that you did appraisals. I think, I think that's interesting because I, I've been doing like, worked in housing education for the past like four years. So I know a lot about appraisals, but, uh, but yeah, I'm curious your take.
So I think the, so the SDC waiver ordinance is going to come to the finance committee. And then I hope that we get the details out of it and we see kind of the, all the nooks and crannies of the proposal that's coming from the mayor and the governor. What I told the mayor is, don't bring me anything watered down. Don't bring me anything small potatoes. I said, it's got to be big and bold enough that I give a damn and big and bold enough that it sends a signal, not just to Oregon, but also to, you know, the way that housing development works is unfortunately it is outside people's money often that is changing that situation. And, and Portland is blacklisted right now. Right? So we have to change that. No matter where you're at on the spectrum, we've got to change that or we're not going to build anything to help us in this situation. And so that's why I told the mayor, don't bring me anything small. Right? Like, and, and from that, uh, I think that the challenge that they posed, you know, 5,000 units, three years is the right direction. 15 to 30 on average of fees per door that you're creating. It's a lot, particularly if we want to build densely. So we want, we want one property unit to have a bunch of those doors on it.
Right.
This is not about, are you creating the affordable subsidized type of unit? This is about creating a supply of all types of units. And so I'm very supportive from that too. We do a lot of work in creation of affordable units, the ones that we subsidize so that they stay affordable based on income requirements. We are also in need of developing units at every type, every income level, et cetera. So I'm a big fan of this. And the other thing that, and sometimes smaller communities, other cities won't totally understand this. Most cities in Oregon have a requirement that if, if their city council waives the SDC, they have to backfill that fund with, with general fund.
Something else.
Right? Makes a lot of sense. If your town is on the fringes of a metro area and you're going from farmland to a suburb. Right? For the first time, you're putting pipes in the ground. I represent downtown Portland, right? The pipe that feeds the Wells Fargo tower does not need to get any bigger.
Right.
Just because their houses now, or their apartments now, instead of being office building.
Yeah.
The whole idea around system development charges is that the amount of people that there, that the system can grow with it. Right? And so in my area, I need my parks maintained. I don't necessarily need a bunch of brand new spaces carved out as parks. I need my streets maintained. Occasionally we got to fix a curb. Got it. In East Portland, if it, if it gets more dense and the way that growth goes, the argument could be said that they need those SDC dollars, right? But we also have a lot of SDC dollars. And so, and then the last piece of this is in a world where Portland only permitted 800 units this year, which is what happened, we're not bringing in any SDCs anyway. So let's do it. Right? So we've got, we've got both those things and, and I consider my job is let's, let's dot the i's, cross the t's, make sure this makes sense from a, we've done the headline now. Now we've got to put the meat on the bones. And then pass this sucker on to the full council for adoption. So we can send that signal. And I think that we've got some folks who have permits in the pipeline, who are, would love to be able to have a penciled out project financially. It just doesn't quite yet pencil.
Yeah.
If this does this and they break ground and we're going to have requirements that they not only break ground, but they start going vertical within a certain amount of time or they lose this waiver. Good. Good.
Yeah. That's great. Actually. Yeah. Cause you made me think, I remember in the, in one of the presentations, I think the permitting bureau, they were saying they have a bunch of those on pause permits that are kind of just waiting. And that would give them incentive to, like you said.
There's a lot of other stuff that goes along this for the, for the everyday person like you and I, right? Our ability to make a change to our own home or make a repair and all that, and those types of permit fees. Yes, those remain a problem.
Right, right.
Right? Um, and so we are, we are taking a bite of this one at a time, but, but sometimes you need a big bite to send a signal. And we've got a permitting review task force underway and they have made some big changes already. I expect more of that to come out. The, um, some, and then, and then the price, if you take permits, price of SDCs and then timeline. That's the other money driver. Even if you had permits that were very cheap or SDCs that were very cheap, but your timeline is really long. You're not as competitive with a place who can guarantee permits in a fast timeline so that these projects, which have to pencil out to get built. So it makes sense. So we've got to tackle a timeline moving forward as well. And I think part of that permitting task force will get to that too.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're saying that'll go to the finance committee first and then.
Yes.
Okay. Cool. Well, yeah, I look forward to that. Um, is there anything else you want to talk about before getting into these goofy questions here? I think I got through all my, all my serious questions. If there's anything on your mind or anything.
I.
I'm sure there's a lot of stuff on your mind.
I appreciate the questions, right? Because, um, sometimes you, you spend all day kind of like having, talking. And so questions are helpful for me. I don't have anything on my mind right now.
All right. Um, these are kind of all over the place, but I wanted to say.
Is it a lightning round?
It is. Yeah. These are fast. Um, but okay. Here's what I'll say.
All right. I'm nervous. If you're already nervous, I'm nervous now.
Nervous because I'm trying to, I'm just trying to do this bit, but, uh, there's some controversy about you out there that you're a, you're a part of the Dorito Illuminati. And I actually, when you were walking up here, this fell out of your pocket. You have a big pocket, but.
I love this.
Maybe I'll put, there was like footage of this falling out of your pocket.
Talk about getting sponsored. I think the city of Portland, state council needs to be sponsored by Doritos at this point, given the coverage that I get on my food choices at council.
Yeah. No, I think it's great. I was texting with somebody yesterday saying, um, I can't, it's, it's, you'd be hard pressed to find somebody who doesn't like Doritos. And if you do, they might be a serial killer.
Exactly.
But I just had a couple of Doritos questions and you can take this, obviously.
Oh, I plan to.
They're portable.
I have a bag of Cool Ranch sitting in my office right now. And if you've seen any of my budget videos, they are very prominently displayed. So yes, thank you for this.
So I had a couple, these are all Doritos, real rapid fire here. Have you ever, I tried to get a weird flavor for you because I've had ketchup and the mustard flavor. Did you know?
I didn't know those existed. You know what I'm on right now? Can I tell you what?
Yeah.
Is the taco ones.
Okay. I don't think I've had those.
And they take me back to Doritos from when we were kids before they got super like, these are kind of like Doritos on steroids in terms of their flavor. That happened like 20 years ago, but the taco ones taste to me kind of more like the original Doritos from when we were younger.
The throwback classic.
Yeah, they're solid.
Okay. I was curious, do you remember the, I think they called them 3D Dorito, the 3D.
Terrible idea.
Okay. Yeah. I don't think they're around anymore, but, uh, okay. I was just curious if you remember that. Um, and what is, do you, Cool Ranch is your favorite. Is that what you'd say?
I switch between the nacho cheese, the red and the Cool Ranch. And since nobody ever has the tacos in vending machines, the taco is only a thing occasionally at home.
Okay. Yeah. I'll also check out those taco ones.
This is a very serious Dorito conversation and I have more opinions on Doritos than I realized, actually.
Okay. These are all either food related or not. Let's see. When you park somewhere normally, do you pull in or do you back in, in your car? Like if it's just a shopping.
I'm like a 50 50.
Okay.
That's funny.
It just depends on the situation.
In a lot.
Yeah. I think military people would.
I, I probably pull in mostly in the city, but it just kind of depends on.
What's going on?
On the setup. Like, can I make it in there easily or not?
Okay. Um, you like crunchy or smooth peanut butter? Or maybe you don't like peanut butter?
Smooth.
Okay. Is there a preferred brand? Do you like, uh, just classic Jif or like?
Yeah, Jif. And then I wish I could be an Adam's guy because I feel like we have that a lot in the, when I was a kid. But it just is harder to spread.
Okay. It's all good. Um, do you have a favorite type of french fry? Do you like crinkle cut, regular cut, curly fries, waffle fries?
Oh, skinny, crispy. So for me, you know, McDonald's is solid, but, um, if you can find like a carnival or like some of the like one-off diners in town that have like really skinny, and I like, I like a little bit of the brown.
Okay. A little crispy.
A little crispy or a little burnt is fine with me or whatever the color oil that makes them more like that, the shoestring thing into it.
Do you support my position that tater tots are in the french fry family?
Oh, I've never heard that.
To me, any, any fried potato is basically a french fry, but I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. If you're going to have a family of potatoes, yes, I think they, they work.
Okay.
And they're, you know, they're kind of a, they're, they started here, right? An Oregon or an Idaho start.
I'll put a thing up. Maybe, maybe I'll research that.
I'm pretty sure they're an US food.
I know that people love, people love the McMiniman's tots. Those are kind of famous.
Yeah. The Cajun ones anyway.
Yeah. Um, let's say you're getting ice cream at Salt and Straw or somewhere like that. Uh, do you go waffle cone, regular cone cup?
Oh, okay. All right. All right. All right. So I worked at a TCBY.
Oh, you did?
When I was in high school and a little bit in college, I have very strong feelings about different types of cones and they're all wonderful. But they all should be served with different types and they have kind of the mood you're in, the weather you're in.
Tailored to the flavor and all that and.
Yeah. There's just something about it. So a cake cone, amazing, boring. You know, your grandfather is going to also love it with you. It's super good, good for kids.
I don't even know what that is. What is?
That's the cake cone is like the wide, really pale, original ice cream cone. And then it just has like that stick bottom.
Yep.
Then you got the sugar cone, which is the best out there. And that's the really skinny, pointy one that you feel like you could like stab somebody with the end of it. Right? And then the waffle cone, if they make their waffle cones in-house, like Salt and Straw does, solid. If they were buying them from one of the companies and they just all get shipped there, don't waste your time.
Okay.
These are all important.
Yeah.
And I've had, I've had one of each in the last month, actually.
Okay.
So I, I love ice cream cones.
Oh yeah. Now I get it because I always ask, what's the flavor? But you, you're like the expert here. So I don't know.
Oh, it, yeah, it just depends.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you were working at, what's it called? TCBY?
Yeah.
Were you giving those little wooden sample, spoon samples all the time?
Plastic, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would think they get annoying, but I don't know. Like, I don't even like.
Well, because we had ice cream and then we had mostly it was frozen yogurt. So it was little cups.
Okay. Got you. Got you.
Yeah.
Let's see here.
I still get frozen yogurt pretty often. I love.
I prefer it honestly to regular ice cream, I guess you'd say. Um, this is kind of random. Let's see. Do you keep your butter out or you keep it in the fridge?
Out.
Okay. Uh, what's your alarm situation? Do you use like a phone alarm? Okay. Do you need it though? Like me, I'll just wake up regardless, even though.
I, I rarely am woken up by my alarm.
Okay.
But I always set it.
Is that a military thing?
I think it's just, uh, the stress of being, of missing an alarm and being late. And, and I don't know when those nights are going to come, when you just like end up sleeping through. So I always set it, but I rarely get woken up by my own alarm.
I did that one time when I was about 19 years old at KGW and I slept, I was working there as a teleprompter guy and I slept through like two whole shows and I never let it happen again. I felt so bad and.
If I have a really weird schedule, like super early or a big deal, like especially with military, you know, you got like physical training in the mornings, right? So I got used to it even in college at like five, 5:30. I'm a multiple alarm person, right? We've all done it on the iPhone. Yeah.
Uh, let's see here. It's got a couple more. Uh, I don't think I've ever asked this one. If like now or in your more young youth days, do you roller skate or roller blade? Do you have a preference?
Oh, okay.
Or can, can you do that? Like.
Well, fun fact.
Oaks Park, I'm sure you.
I, so first ice skating, I learned how to ice skate as soon as I was young. In fact, the, you know, while I'm at week does these like random questions when they do our endorsement interviews. And I got my ice skating lessons or from Tanya Harding's coach that she had during the Olympics. Because her, the coach's son and I were in preschool together.
Wow.
And so I remember like getting kicked off the ice one day and looking to my right and this enormous leg got put up on the side of the ice skating rink and it was Tanya as she was like doing her laces. And she's a very strong person, especially back in 1990.
Yeah.
And I just remember being like wowed at four or five years old by this thigh in my world, the thigh that looked like it was enormous. Right? At the, it's at the same height as my head. So rollerblading came out when we were kids, right? It was kind of a thing. So I was super into rollerblading and now I'm kind of into the nostalgia of just the little roller skate, the fourth thing.
Yeah.
But it's been a while.
Yeah. It's kind of hard yet to, I don't know. I'm losing my balance as I get older. I have a skateboard over there, but I'm just like, I will.
I never took a skateboarding at all. I never liked it, never understood it. My friends would do it. I was like, that's not for me, but I always liked rollerblading. That was fun. Super good. I'd go off to any jumps like those with I would, a bike. Yeah.
Okay. Is there, if you could pick like a gigantic brand to run the company, is there one you'd want to run? A Doritos maybe? You'd be the CEO of Doritos.
Oh my God. I have ne, I've never thought about that.
I guess that'd be, what is that Nabisco or something?
Frito Lay, Frito Lay.
Frito, yeah. And if you don't have one, that's fine.
No, I don't. I've never even thought about that. I haven't got a clue.
I know it's weird, you know, being an elected person having to do that, but.
Yeah. No, it's, it's not really my thing. I'm not a really, uh,
Yeah.
Never worked in a big job like that.
Makes sense. Um, I, I have to, I've been doing this Price is Right thing. I'm gonna, I'll do it real quick here and then I'll do a meal shout out, but, um, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get like a sponsorship with Grocery Outlet, but I go to Grocery Outlet a lot and I find a lot of stuff under a dollar.
Yeah.
So I'll give you that clue. How much do you think I paid for this? How much do you think I paid for this bag of pumpkin spice?
Pumpkin spice? When did you buy them though?
Just today.
Okay, so today, pumpkin spice out of season at Grocery Outlet? Under a dollar. I think that that was sixty nine cents.
It's, it's lower than that. I'll give you two.
Wow.
Three guesses if you.
Okay. I think, I think it was fifty cents a bag.
Still lower.
Oh, my goodness. All right. So were they giving them away for free? They kind of look like they need to be given away for free.
I actually couldn't, I had to do the math because it was like six, or sorry, uh, six for a dollar. So it's like eighteen cents.
Yeah, they look pretty gross. Are you going to eat that?
I probably will, but you can have it if you don't want it.
I do not want that.
This is just a classic Cracker Jack. How much, how much do you think that went for?
I went to, I went to the Sellwood House two weeks ago.